Are we ready? Okay. Good evening. I am going to call to order the August 12th, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. I am Chair Tom Caputo, joined by Vice Chair Adam Dash.
Good evening.
And Select Board Member Roy Epstein.
Good evening.
And as always, Patrice Garvin, good evening, our town administrator.
Back from vacation.
Back from vacation. Okay, so a couple of quick announcements and then we're going to shift the agenda around ever so slightly. All right, so this Wednesday, August 14th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., Belmont and Boston High School students who have participated in the six-week Paid Learning Boston YEP, I don't know if they have that right, the Youth Environmental Entrepreneurship Program, are selling mid-to-late-season, pollinator-friendly native perennials, including grasses and a few bushes. They'll plant them for you, too. Again, that is Wednesday, August 14th, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., at the First Parish Church Unitarian Universalist Church on 50 Church Street. There's plenty parked. All right. Bocce and Burgers with the Belmont Police and Fire Department. So Tuesday, August 13th, I guess tomorrow, at 4:00 p.m., the Beet Street Center is excited to host our first Bocce and Burgers evening with the Belmont Police and Fire Departments. The police will provide the grill, and thanks to our generous sponsor, Maplewood at Weston, all things are cooking up on the grill. As things are cooking up on the grill, I'll start a game of bocce with some of the police or firefighters. But remember, this is a friendly match, not a bocce player. Join our bocce group on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 9:30 a.m., so you'll be ready to play. I guess a little bit late for that. We'll also have cornhole set up, or you can just meet and mingle. Space is limited, so make sure you can sign up at the front desk of the Beet Street Center. Cost is free. Big Band Music. So Tom Nuttall, it's the Tom Nuttall Big Band, featuring vocalist Jim Bromante, at the Beet Street Center on Thursday, September 12th, at 7:00 p.m. Tickets are $10. Refreshments will be served, and this concert is presented by the Friends of the Belmont Council of Aging. All proceeds will support the senior center programs and services. And finally, Meet Belmont, our annual opportunity for the community to engage with the town, is scheduled for Tuesday, August 27th, 6:00 to 8:00. Put that on your calendars. Note a different location this time. We are doing it at the Belmont Day School Gymnasium. As a reminder, it is free for all to attend, presented by the Meet Belmont Planning Committee, co-sponsored by Belmont Public Schools, with support from the Belmont Car Wash and Belmont Light. There you can meet local government officials and nonprofit leaders, discuss recreation and arts programs, find community organizations volunteering other activities, and participate in our democracy by registering to vote, and support the Belmont Food Pantry with non-perishable foods or toiletry items. All right, with that, we're going to jump into the agenda. We have an executive session which we are going to pick up in a couple of minutes, but first, we're going to go through updates from Floyd, or I guess approvals from Floyd of Massachusetts Water Research Authority Water Assistance Loan Agreements. So Floyd Carmen, Town Treasurer, would you join us?
That's just for the second one, not the first. That's just the second one, the $245,000. It's the first.
Vote for the second.
Just the vote for the second item on the agenda.
First, the vote on one. One document. You can read that whole thing and say.
No, got it, but what about the other two items on the agenda?
It's all part of that.
Okay.
Floyd's got to turn on his mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, Floyd Carmen, Town Treasurer. So I come before you tonight, we have three borrowings. One is a MWRA water bond, that's roughly $500,000. We have a water and sewer enterprise borrowing. Hold on for a minute while I dig that out. That's for $212,000, and there's another $212,000 of some grant money. And this, both of these are interest-free, that's a critical piece of all of this. And then is the second sewer borrowing, which is $245,850. There's also some grant money to this that brings it up into the neighborhood of about $840-some-odd thousand. So all three of these deal with the MWRA water bond and sewer bond, all interest-free, with some grant money. So what I need you gentlemen to do is to vote upon this, and then tomorrow morning, this will be dispatched over to the MWRA, and next week, we will be getting those grants.
I think it's probably worth noting that not every town does this, as you pointed out.
You are correct, Selectman Dash. Belmont is one of the few communities that goes through all of the work to participate in these grant programs. There's various phases. The water bond project started some 20-plus years ago with Peter Castanino, and it has continued on. The water and, I'm sorry, the sewer, the two sewer borrowings, I'm not sure of the precise time, but I think it's probably been around 15 years. And both of these are through the efforts of Jay Markhart, in the Director of DPW, and Glenn Clancy, Director of Community Development. Glenn is, let's say, our MWRA sewer expert, and Jay is our MWRA water bond expert. But through their efforts of getting all of the information pulled together from our consultants and getting it into the MWRA, every year, we're able to come before the Board of Selectmen and have you gentlemen approve these loans. Now, I've been, this is my 14th visit with you gentlemen, so 14 years in a row we've participated in this. The benefits of this particular program might not be seen initially, but four, five, six years from now, when the EPA and all of those wonderful organizations start turning up the pressure, Belmont will be way ahead of the curb. There are a lot of towns that don't participate in these programs, so hats off to Mr. Clancy and Mr. Markhart.
Absolutely. Yep. Thanks to those two gentlemen and to yourself and your office for continuing to push this forward year after year. So, we're great. We do need to read this motion, which is a little bit involved. You have read it in the past.
I got it.
Would you be willing to use your radio voice to do that?
Absolutely.
All right.
Are you ready to sign?
I am ready to sign, so why don't you read that, and I will start signing, and hopefully we will race to the finish.
Voted the Board of Selectmen, and I, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Belmont, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held August 12th, 2019, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes unanimously passed, all which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of $245,850 sewer bond of the town dated August 19th, 2019, to Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the authority, is hereby approved and the Town Treasurer or other appropriate town officials authorized to execute on behalf of the town alone agreement and financial assistance agreement with the authority to respect to the bond. The bond should be payable without interest on August 15th of the year and in the principal amounts as follows. Year 2020, installment $49,170. 2021, $49,170. 2022, $49,170. 2023, $49,170. 2024, $49,170. Further voted that the sale of the $212,000 sewer bond, dollar sewer bond of the town dated August 19th, 2019, to the authorities hereby approved and the Town Treasurer or other appropriate town officials authorized to execute on behalf of the town alone agreement and financial assistance agreement with the authority to respect to the bond. The bond should be payable without interest on August 15th of the year and in the principal amounts as follows. Year 2020, installment $21,200. 2021, $21,200. 2022, $21,200. 2023, $21,200. 2024, $21,200. 2025, $21,200. 2026, $21,200. 2027, $21,200. 2028, $21,200. 2029, $21,200. Further voted that the sale of the $500,000 water bond of the town dated August 19th, 2019, to the authorities hereby approved and the Town Treasurer or other appropriate town official is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and a financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond should be payable without interest on August 15th of the year and in the principal amounts as follows. Year 2020, installment $50,000. 2021, $50,000. 2022, $50,000. 2023, $50,000. 2024, $50,000. 2025, $50,000. 2026, $50,000. 2027, $50,000. 2028, $50,000. 2029, $50,000. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the Town Clerk, the Town Treasurer being, or hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing vote.
You can stop there. That's the vote.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have one other small comment.
Yes.
When Mr. Dash read the vote, you voted for the vote, he started out by saying, "This is the vote of the Board of Selectmen." Okay, I realize at town meeting, we had a name change, but that name change has not been approved by the Attorney General. This board is still considered the Board of Selectmen, so if that question comes up, we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Especially for their legally binding documents and contracts.
Exactly. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Floyd.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a public tree hearing scheduled to start at 7:20 for a tree at 35 Myrtle Street. We are going to open that tree hearing, and then we will continue that hearing while we go into executive session. So I guess with that, I hereby open that hearing.
And I move to table the public tree hearing for 35 Myrtle Street, Eight Inch Oak.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we've tabled that, and we will come back to it in just a minute. With that, we're going to go into executive session, and we're going to do it jointly with the school committee. So if I can invite the school committee up, I think you will have to open your meeting, and then we will have to all go into executive session.
They have a quorum?
I believe they do.
Yeah, they do.
Okay. I guess you can, yeah.
I'll just sit so I get the mic and I'll call the meeting to order.
You can at least sit with a mic, exactly.
So Susan Burgess-Cox, Chair of the School Committee, calling meeting of the School Committee to order at 7:35 p.m., and also will take a roll call vote of the School Committee to enter into executive session for, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining with union personnel, giving that a discussion. An open session may have detrimental impact on the School Committee's bargaining position. So do we have a roll call vote to enter into executive session? You need to state your name and aye.
Mike Crowley, yes?
Amy Checkaway, yes. Tara Donner, yes. Susan Burgess-Cox, yes.
Okay, and with that, I move to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
Second.
A roll call vote?
Adam Dash, aye.
Tom Caputo, aye.
Roy Epstein, aye.
Okay, so we will be heading downstairs for executive session into room?
Do you think we can move in four?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can squeeze in.
We'll squeeze into room four. Okay, so we will be back, I would imagine, what do we think? Ho, ho, ho. Well, that's right. I won't give any predictions, but hopefully we can do it in, let's say, 15 minutes or Out of executive session, we need to do that with a roll call vote.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
Adam Dash, aye.
Tom Caputo, aye.
Roy Epstein, aye.
Excellent. Okay, thank you for everyone's patience. We will pick up our tree hearing for 39 Myrtle Street, the Eight Inch Oak.
Move to take the public tree hearing of 35 Myrtle Street, Eight Inch Oak, off the table. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you like to lay out the context around this tree hearing?
Okay. So, back, I want to say, a couple of months ago, the tree warden had a public hearing on this tree on Myrtle Street. The property owner wanted to remove it and instead put in two trees to replace it. The property owner had been doing some renovations on his home, and he's also applied for a driveway permit, which is currently in community development. Some of the neighbors had expressed concerns at the tree hearing in regards to some conditions that they would like to place on that approval of removing the tree. At that time, the resident had the opportunity to appeal to the Board of Selectmen, which he has. One of the residents had forwarded me what the conditions they wanted to place on the property owner. I forwarded those to George Hall Town Council for his opinion, which has been provided to you, the board. And so we noticed the butters to let them know that the hearing was taking place tonight, and Mr. Goodman has an opportunity to appeal his case to the Board of Selectmen as to why he should remove the tree.
So we should let him make a presentation and then take public comment?
That sounds great. Is Mr. Goodman here?
Aye.
If you would come to the mic and introduce yourself. Yes, please.
My name is Stephen Goodman. I'm the owner at 35 Myrtle Street. So we have made the petition to remove the tree, mostly in large part because we want to remove the driveway, which is on the uphill side of our house, and we have a large water problem in our basement, and so we're trying to create a permeable surface that has swales. So as part of a large landscaping project to actually move the water around our house and create bio retention areas, this would require, then, to move the driveway, and the only place, honestly, where the driveway can fit is unfortunately where the tree is. And so we've been working with our neighbors on suitable solutions, because we do like the tree. Honestly, we moved into and bought the house because there had been two 120-year-old oak trees in front of the house that unfortunately had, were taken down last year due to its lifespan, and so we are quite happy to be replacing the trees and just moving it slightly out of the range of where that driveway would be. We're happy to provide photographs, if you want, of the basement conditions and the plans, if that is helpful.
And so is the plan, then, to replace it with two trees? Is that correct?
So we are essentially taking down one tree and replacing it, and then adding a second tree in addition to help fill out where there had been old, the bigger trees had, were no longer there.
What's the caliber of the trees going in?
We've been told by the tree warden that, well, we've sourced a 16-foot tree, which we believe is somewhere between two to three inches. It depends on exactly the source. The tree warden says that two to two and a half inches is essentially the largest size you can put in from ball. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, yeah.
Open up to the public. Do you have any questions, and then we can let the public comment?
Yeah, looking at a letter that we received, it refers to conditions that were agreed upon, and they include two trees, I guess, of the size that you indicated, and a number of other conditions. Is that, is that an agreement that you agreed to, or is that an agreement that did not involve you?
No, we've been working with the neighbors, so I, we do agree to those terms. There are other conditions in terms of putting in granite curbs to help hold soil in so that there's less erosion on the hill, as well as the conditions around application for the driveway. Unfortunately, driveway cannot obviously be approved while the tree is still there, but according to Glenn Clancy, it meets the requirements from a zoning perspective.
So you're going to install granite stones means conventional granite curbing in front of the trees?
Like the rest of the street has.
Additional questions?
I want to hear from the public first, and then I have some.
Okay. Thank you very much. Members of the public that would like to comment on this issue, please come to the mic, introduce yourself, and share your perspective.
My name is William Horn. I live actually out on Myrtle, but, about the end of Myrtle and 79th School Street. I just wanted to sort of make sure that you obviously had been and received the email that I sent this morning. We've been working with the Goodmans over the course of the summer to try to come to terms, and yes, I copied Mr. Goodman on that email as well, just to say that, like, we have, as a neighborhood, come together, and if those stipulations are met, then he should be able to proceed as they desire. And I think the upside is that the general area will be improved, and they'll have what they need for their, you know, better quality of life on their lot, so. Sound good?
Thank you very much for the comment. Others? The perspective to share?
We can close the part of the public hearing.
Yeah, I think with that, we will close that part of the public hearing.
All right, I have some comments. We have, there were five, it's actually pretty simple, there were five agreement, pieces to this agreement, and George Hall has weighed in on all of them. So, number one, just for the public, number one, installing the true root ball trees of the largest possible size, to understand, are two-to-three-inch caliper, that was okay. Installing granite curbing, that was number two, was okay. Number three was setting up an escrow account held by the town or the neighborhood to ensure that the project is followed as written, and George Hall had said that administratively that is difficult, and the recommendation was to withhold permits or such, or to be able to enforce it. I would suggest maybe it could be done by, you can't take the old tree down until the new trees are in, and he can't get a driveway permit until the new trees are in, would seem to solve that problem rather than...
I'm not sure you can put the, I think, does one of the trees have to come out for the site, for the replacement to go in?
I would think there are different locations, but I guess we could ask Mr. Goodman then.
So the...
You have to come to the microphone.
Sorry, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So actually, the neighbors agreed that that would not, the escrow, just in terms of the neighbor discussion, because we did discuss the challenge, especially given the fact that they are, they would become town trees as opposed to my trees, that they felt that the curbs were really addressing it and giving the best chance for the trees in terms of holding in the soil from that erosion, and that would suffice in terms of the location. So the problem is that there are still deep roots from the original two big trees, and so actually, in order to plant the other ones, we actually really have to essentially dig up. One of the new trees would go where my current driveway is, so I then, if, in order to put that in before the other ones out, I have essentially no driveway. So I, yeah, that, it's kind of a chicken and egg.
Chicken and egg problem, I got it.
Yeah.
I know Mr. Horn seems to want to...
Yeah, please.
Why not? There's only one resident here.
Just to make this easier, today's email does not mention the escrow account. Today is much more simplified, because we have been working this out internally. Please use that as the agreed-upon terms. The escrow account was our original request way back before we had a chance to speak with Mr. Goodman about this, and so we really did not want to go through the board. But today's email has the stipulation that we've all agreed to, there should be no mention of the escrow account.
Do you have a copy of that? I don't think I have that.
Thanks, Council.
Well, it depends what it is, if it takes conditions away. I guess I mean...
Thank you.
I gather that there were no changes to this first two conditions that I'd stated. So this, this is basically, one, plant two trees, if we talked about, two is install the granite curbs, which we talked about, three is relocated driveway as being in compliance with the town zoning rules and regulations, which was similar to what, which is basically number four in the old one, which Town Council had said is superfluous, because the law is the law, you don't have to say it's the law. This number four in the new one says precautions to protect neighborhood, neighbors from construction dust particulates and hours of daily work, and this is, this was condition four from before, five from before, which George Hall said was not a defensible condition to attach to the decision regarding removal of a shade tree under the Public Shade Tree Act, General Laws, Chapter 87. So, and I would say, you know, at any rate, the, we have codes about doing work.
I was about to say, I think codes would cover this.
So we could, I mean, I guess, I wish the rest of the neighbors were here so we could sort of have this discussion, but the, we'll deal with who we have here. I mean, putting in the two trees, yes. I'm just summarizing George Hall. Putting in the granite curbs, yes, and then pretty much the other two pieces that are left here, because you took out the business about the escrow, so that simplifies that one. And the other two remaining, one is just reiterating the law, which doesn't need to be in there, and then the other one, we just can't legally do. So I guess that's, if you're okay with the two trees and the granite curbs, and we are done, then we're done.
Well, hold on one second. This is not describing George's opinion exactly correctly. Regarding the granite curbing, first, I want to just clarify whether there's any dispute at this point between the homeowner and the neighbors about installing the curbing.
Yeah. I'll let the neighbor, I'll let the neighbor speak.
Okay. I, so George Hall's opinion on the curbing is that it purports to be, I'm just reading his note here, "purports to be necessary to protect the new trees, as such it is at least theoretically permissible. Whether it is a proportionate and necessary requirement, I leave to the town staff who have more knowledge of the topic than I do." I would just say, in something like this, if this is an agreement between the homeowner and the neighbors as to what, and this is what the homeowner is willing to do, then it makes it easy, I think, for the board to go along. At the same time, since I've been involved in similar issues myself, I can tell you that granite curbing, I agree with George that there is a big question whether it's actually necessary for the trees. I can tell you that it's actually quite expensive. So I want to make it clear that if the board votes in support of this arrangement, that this is not a precedent for how situations that may arise in the future are to be resolved, because I think this is, there are some unique features of this solution here which should not determine how these types of questions are resolved in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think it's a fair point, although I don't necessarily know that anything that we would be doing tonight would be binding us to different actions in the future.
No, I just want to make clear that there should be nothing binding us in the future.
Yep.
Well, every case is unique, but, I mean, in zoning, there's, that's what they say, is every case is unique. It's hard to have precedent, because every situation's slightly different, but George did say that the granite curbing was theoretically permissible, and I take that to mean that we can do it, so. And I'm not, and no one's arguing about it, so I don't want to create an argument where there isn't one.
Exactly, I think we're good.
I guess the main point is really, with the other two points, that the, taking out the superfluous of the driveway has to be in compliance with the law, which basically is what it is, the law anyway, and then this business about the precautions that we're told we can't impose, and is that going to disrupt this or not?
But I guess the question that I would say on that fourth one is, we may not be able to impose it, but if our homeowner has agreed that he will take those actions, maybe we can't impose it, but hopefully in good faith, he would honor that, and...
We can add it as a condition, is what George...
We can add it as a condition, but again, I would hope the homeowner would continue to do that. That's largely about taking, you know, I would say, typical precautions to...
Well, I know this, from having heard from neighbors before, because this isn't the only, first time this project has come up, because I've heard from, you know, residents about this particular project and issues with dust in the past. So I think some of this has to, is not to do with the tree, it has to do with the construction on the site.
Past, the broader construction.
Unrelated, and that now that there's going to be more construction, I think there's concern that dust mitigation wasn't handled well last time, and it needs to be handled well again. I mean, obviously, what we're here doing is, we're doing a permit to remove a street tree, a town tree.
Yep.
We can't, there are only certain conditions we can put on that are related to the street tree, because that's all in our purview. We cannot put conditions on about construction on the site outside of the street tree, because that's all this hearing is technically about, which is why the granite curbing comment came up, because it has to be related to the tree, which I think it is, but, so, I guess with Mr. Horn, I wish the rest of your neighbors were here, so you guys are going to have to speak for them, with that, and you have to come to the microphone if you're going to talk. Is this, I wanted to know, if we take out that condition four about the, because I don't know that we can do anything out about the particulates and dust and hours of work, is that something, does this deal still survive with the rest of the points?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, our goal actually was to try to avoid it actually coming here, and that would have been an agreement amongst neighbors. So, you know, that which can be put into record because it affects the tree and the curb and things that are part of the town, if the other two have to be stricken as something that you are not enforcing.
Can't legally undo.
I think we, as neighbors, can handle the rest, because we've agreed to it.
I mean, if Mr. Goodman, while he's here, wants to put on the record, so we're on TV, it would be nice to have this on the record, that you would be, we can't make it a condition, but if you would be willing to take precautions to protect neighbors from construction particulate and dust and hours of daily work and compliance of town ordinances, I think we would feel better. Not that I can make it, but it...
Adam, I think it's reasonable to ask the homeowner to conform to the requirements of whatever permit he gets and leave it at that.
That I can commit to.
I would, you know, I, given that there's an agreement, it's probably a bad idea to try to muck it up, but.
You're gonna do it anyway.
I'm gonna do it only because.
Basically there.
No, the difficulty, this shows the difficulty of writing a contract. Unless you have a granite curbing contractor lined up, I can just advise you from my own experience, it can be difficult to find somebody willing to install curbing on such a small job. And if you can, if you're willing to do it and you can find a contractor to do it, then that's great. But there is a possibility, when you go ahead with this, that you may not, you may not find a curbing contractor willing to bid on such a small job. And I don't know where that will lead you at that point, other than I would observe that other trees on the street are doing fine without curbing. But that is a contingency that may arise.
Okay.
Glenn wants to speak to them.
Huh?
Glenn wants to speak.
Oh, Glenn, did you?
Glenn.
Our curbing expert.
Glenn Clancy, Director of Community Development. I wanted to hit on a couple of things. I just was talking to Jay about something that really is a DPW matter, but since I'm up here on some things, he said knock yourself out, and so here I am. The granite curbing question, when we reconstructed Myrtle Street several years ago, many of the abutters on Myrtle Street purchased granite curbing themselves. And that's why you see a lot of granite on Myrtle Street. My sense is that the requests for granite at this particular address is so there's some consistency with the rest of the roadway, which I think probably in concept is a good idea. I would say that in a conversation I had with Tom Walsh, the tree warden, and Jay had the same conversation at a different time, the tree warden's concern is the size of the excavation that's going to be necessary to be able to plant these two new trees. Because of the caliper of the tree, that, that translates to a certain size of root ball. And so the town, the tree warden's concern was that, first of all, the work be done at a proper time of year. Okay, so that is a fall or spring timeframe. You don't want to be planting trees in the summertime. Roy, this may get to your point about trying to schedule a contractor. There's some lead time here, just because you're not going to do this work right now. So maybe there can be some coordination to line that contractor up in the fall, do the tree work and have the curbing work done at the same time. The other thing that Tom Walsh had mentioned was the fact that it is likely that some of the sidewalk will have to be removed as well in order for the excavation to be done properly to be able to sight these two new trees. The homeowner also mentioned the fact that there are remnants of the tree root system from the prior trees. So there's a lot of excavation and work that will be required. I just think it's important that somewhere on the record, it be recognized, the amount of work that will be required to properly prep the area for these two trees to be planted. The other thing that I want to touch on is I have a plot plan, certified plot plan dated June 6th of this year. That plot plan shows the proposed new driveway. That driveway is zoning compliant. I was reluctant to sign off on that permit, and I did convey that to the property owner. My reluctance to do that pending the hearing this evening. But I thought it would be instructive for the board to know that that plan has been presented. It is zoning compliant. And, and once all of this is resolved this evening, I will have the ability to sign off on that driveway proposal.
Glenn, are you saying that planting the largest possible tree for that space may entail replacing some sidewalk panels?
Well, look.
Well, my question is, A, if, if that's the case, I assume then the sidewalk work is at the town's expense, not the homeowner's expense?
I would imagine that it is at the homeowner's expense. That would be my guess. I guess I, it's not clear to me on whose expense that would be, but I would, I would assume that with all the other work that's occurring at the property, that the homeowner would restore the sidewalk as well. One other comment that I want to make about curbing, because of the work that's necessary to excavate and plant these two trees, you will be disturbing that shoulder significantly. And the need for granite or some kind of a curb treatment would be necessary at that point. Roy, your point about a lot of the trees surviving without a curb treatment, I think that's a fair point, but you're probably, in the context of the shoulders and those trees existing for many, many years, those shoulders are solid and they're not subject to an erosion concern. Once you excavate and start tampering with those shoulders, which will occur on this project, some kind of a curb treatment to be able to hold that shoulder back together while it revegetates is going to be necessary.
Okay.
That's good to know, because that actually ties the, that ties the granite curbing into the tree nicely. I mean, so I guess what we're, what they're looking for us to do would be to make a motion unless there's more discussion or.
I'm good for a motion.
Right.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. So the motion would be to allow the, the homeowner to, to remove the eight inch caliper street tree in front of 35 Myrtle Street with the following provisos. One would be to plant two root ball trees of the largest size possible as replacement. Planting occur, may occur after the completion of major construction, so long as the new trees are planted within 10 months of the removal of the current living oak tree and before the disrupted sidewalk is repaired and fixed. And two, install granite curbs and adequate soil backfill to protect the new trees and give them the best chance for survival. I would, I guess, add in there and repair any sidewalk damaged. And then that would be it, because the other two items come out.
Mm-hmm.
Second. If that sounds like something, and I'm seeing Mr. Horn nodding yes, so.
All in favor?
Mr. Goodman.
Are you comfortable?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
I'm pretty sure you guys working, you know, talking together before you came here makes it a lot easier when neighbors, you know, talk it out.
You guys gave us time.
Good. Glad that worked out.
Sometimes you just need a little breathing room, you know.
Okay, on to our next agenda. Item is awarding the contract for trash disposal, trash disposal to Wheel Abraider. And I think Jay is joining us. Jay Markcott, Director of Public Works. How are you, Jay?
Very good. Yourself?
Good, thank you.
Hello. Jay Markcott, DPW Director. John Faris with Wheel Abraider started the beginning of the summer, going to their existing communities that they have five-year contracts with, knowing that this, this year right now FY20 is the last year of that five-year contract, which we all appreciate, believe me, depending specifically what's going on with the recycling markets right now. I can honestly tell you that I am surprised that the pricing, I thought would be a lot more expensive to get rid of trash, considering that the cost to get rid of recycling is about $10 more than the cost to get rid of trash. So I thought that they would try to be as close together as possible, but they weren't. They came in very competitive. The end of this year is the current contract, which is a $69.54. And then we have a 10% increase, which is across the board. Everyone that I have talked to, Lexington, Wilmington, Redding, Wakefield, they are, they're all seeing the $77 per ton. After that, it's, they're a little bit different, but they're within 15 cents, the 20 cents per ton difference. And from what I can tell, we're the lowest of all of them, which I don't understand why. But I'm not going to complain. What, so what we have is this five years, it's, there's no limit on how much trash we give to Wheel Abraider. I did make a presentation at this year's town meeting that we average about 7,500 tons per year on the last two years, give or take. The beginning of this new trap, automated program, our trash went down to about 6,200, which is about an 18% reduction. So I think the offset with the, the increase with the trash for year one in FY21 and the reduction of what we're seeing from the automated program should be a good offset in our favor.
Is the increase in the budget?
No, we just got this, so we have to plug it in.
So just to provide context then, so for the last four years of the contract, or five years of the contract, we've seen two and a half percent increases year over year, right?
A little bit more. So I think it's 2.75, I think.
Okay.
But yeah, it's under three.
Under three. We're going to have year one, which is 10%.
Yep.
And then a couple, the next four years are somewhere between two and a half and three and a half, somewhere in that ballpark.
Give or take, yes.
Okay, so slightly more expensive than what we've seen, but as you say, kind of more in line with historical trends. And under the circumstances, pretty reasonable.
Yeah. Historically, I don't know if anyone remembers the Swaric days, but we were spending upwards to $100 per ton back in those days, with a, with a limit. I mean, not a limit, with a expectation of that we were going to have X amount of tons per trash per month. And if we didn't meet those numbers, we had to pay the difference.
Wow.
Yeah, it was tough years.
So Jay, we've been taking trash to Wheel Abraider for a long time now?
Over 20 years.
What's, what's the next best alternative?
Covanta, in the same town, North Andover. Covanta has some restrictions with how much tonnage they can accept a day per the state of Massachusetts. There, I have not heard a good story come out of Covanta with trucks that are waiting. We in particular have trucks that sometimes go twice in a day to offload. And if they're waiting in line for two, three hours, they'll never come back. And that's what a lot of communities that have Covanta are dealing with.
Pricing, do we understand that they're comparable?
They're, they're almost identical.
Okay. So it just sounds like cost of, as we've seen before, the trash pickup contract, that just the cost of waste disposal keeps going up, up, up.
Mm-hmm. And recycling.
Yeah.
It's good. Unless there are any questions, I have a motion.
Back to your question earlier, Adam, with the change in the budget, we got this literally less than a month ago. So the budget was already approved by the time we got this.
Do you know what the hit number wise would be? I mean, it says per ton. I don't know what, I don't off the top of my head know what the number of tons are.
It varies.
It does vary, but I would like to have our tonnage keep going down.
Well, yeah, because people, people have less trash, then it costs less for the tons.
We're, we're budgeted for about 8,300 tons for this year, and we're already down to 6,200. So there'll be some savings.
Well, that's what you were presenting at town meeting last, when, when we switched over to the, the barrel program. The amount of recycling went up dramatically, the amount of trash went down dramatically, which saves the town money, so.
Exactly.
We're going to be 6,200 annualized?
Right now, on the first year of the program, we came in about 6,200 tons for the entire town.
That's amazing.
There's, there's room for improvement.
But we're doing better than most.
Yes.
Yep.
All right.
That's great. All right, a motion.
I move that the FY21 to FY25 Second Amendment to the Service Contract Agreement for the Trash Disposal be awarded to Wheel Abraider North Andover, Inc. Otherwise, cost per ton is noted in Jay Markcott's memo dated August 7th, 2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Just for talking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. That was great. I mean, it's not great.
So you need a signature here.
Good, great explanation, not a great situation.
It's a volatile world out there and in the recycling and trash world.
But Jay, you said there's an inversion now where recycling disposal per ton all in is?
They like to call it processing. So they process the material, and then they, you know, sort it to where, you know, paper and cans and metal and aluminum and cardboard, which has a value. And then they have what is called contamination, which is, has no value, and that has to be thrown away as trash. So the processing fee is all of those things I just said is one price. And that fluctuates depending on the market.
But at the end of the day, is, is it more expensive to recycle a ton than to dispose of it?
Yes.
All right, such is the topsy-turvy.
Such is, exactly, unfortunately.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to the next, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For you?
Yep. Award contract for engineering services for the community path to, is it NICHED?
Yes, so we're, we're asking to table that till your next agenda, which will be the 26th. We're still having council review.
All right, well, my question of, what are the terms of the contract, I guess?
Yeah.
We will table that.
It's still, it's in between councils right now.
Great. At last, let's pick up a little bit of time in our way behind meeting.
All five minutes of it.
All five minutes of it. All right, so a discussion of the Vision 21 Master Plan.
[inaudible].
Please, by all means. You want to turn on that microphone as well when you sit down, please?
All right.
See you.
Thanks for having us.
Would you, so just to set some context, we have a, a comprehensive master plan, a project that was initiated 10 years ago, and we're about to have that 10-year plan expire. And it's incumbent upon the town to refresh that master plan. And our Vision 21 Committee has a proposal and a thought for how we would approach that. So with that, would love to have you take it away.
Introduce yourself.
Thanks, yeah.
Please do introduce yourself.
Yep, first of all, my name's Kevin Dorn. I'm the Chair of the Vision 21 Committee. This is Roger Fusa, the Vice Chair, and Renee Gwol, who's a master planner by trade, so very apropos for this conversation. So, yeah, so we started off by just a general audit. We said, hey, we, we were looking at some benchmarking activities with other towns and comparing them against Belmont. And so we kind of read through the comprehensive plan and found that it was still pretty relevant, right? I mean, it's, it's a very relevant document. It's, it's called, it's dated 2010 to 2020, so it is ending the, nearing the end of its, of its life. And so the question really is what to do after 2020. And, and really, when it comes down to it, I think there's sort of three options. One is just to say, well, we don't need a master plan and abandon it. And, and really then, if, if you sort of take that one off the table and we say, hey, there is value in a master plan, then, you know, you could do a full-blown, you know, renewal of a master plan, which would probably be a long and lengthy process, or you could essentially just refresh it. And so that's our recommendation, is to take the existing plan and refresh it. And the other sort of key element to this is that we believe that we can secure a grant through MAPC and some of the state funds that are out there. MAPC is currently, you know, working, we have a grant from MAPC to work for our economic development plan.
MAPC is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, right?
Correct.
The consortium of Boston-area communities?
Yep. And so our recommendation would be, and essentially the document that we provided you, the second section of that is a, a statement of work that could basically be, you know, 90% translated into the grant application, which would be submitted by the town and in the attempt to secure funding to sort of move forward with a refresh. And our thoughts in terms of the general principles of that refresh, there's a lot of documents that exist that I think could be part of this, that, you know, in many cases, town meeting is already approved and voted on, and could be sort of foundational documents that would be, you know, basically make up the, the master, the new master plan moving forward. So that would be our, our recommendation in terms of how that would go. And really to focus on the areas that have changed significantly from 2010 and, and make that the focus. You know, in all master plan refresh, you're going to have some public engagement. And, but I think making it very focused in terms of where we would look, solicit input from the, from the public would be kind of the best way to handle that in a way that, you know, would allow us to do sort of, you know, to go the refresh route vice a complete, you know, start over from a blank piece of paper.
Makes sense.
I mean, I'm the liaison to the Vision 21 Committee. I went to one of their meetings and we had this discussion about kicking off this process. And it sounds like they're willing to take on the task and, or, along with many others, planning board is going to.
I was about to say.
Now Steve is here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, this is, a lot has happened. Obviously, it's amazing when you look at the 2010 master plan to 2020, how much of it we did.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like huge amount of it we did. It's, it's incredible. So we need to.
And yet a lot of it that actually does still remain relevant.
Yeah.
Although I think you actually call it out here, which I think is worth noting, two big areas, that weren't necessarily reflected there, one of them being the surging school enrollment. That wasn't fully contemplated there that I know we're dealing with. And the other was traffic, which is, I think is another one that we will probably want to pick up as we think about the master plan efforts going forward. But largely, we should be able to leverage a lot of what's currently in place and go through a refresh.
And set some new goalposts and then go for it, yeah.
I would also add that it helps a lot going for a grant, a state grant specifically, if you have a master plan that's current and up to date, it gives you more points.
More credibility.
Yep.
What timeframe do you have in mind for doing the refresh?
So I think we could submit the grant application ASAP, probably get it done this month. And then it really, there's a, a time that, and there is a typo, I believe, in, in the timing on that. But it's going to be, I, I see it as a one-year study, probably in that 2020, you know, start January 20th, end the end of 2020.
That was, I did see that, that it was the same year. You were going to start and stop in the same quarter, which was remarkable, remarkable.
Speed at which we're going to do that.
Improbable.
There's also a lot of public input.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. As there was last time. But I mean, we need to, you know, I think that's, that's a great thing to have, to bring people together, talk about all subjects. Do we have to vote on the grant application? Or is that just something that you can submit?
That's something I can just submit. It's through the MAPC. It's a rolling grant.
Just procedurally, I don't particularly need to vote on them.
You can endorse and support it.
Yep. Which is great. Steve, as Chair of the Planning Board, is there anything you want to specifically comment on at this point? Or, because this does have to be a collaboration, as we've discussed, I'd say, between the Planning Board, the Vision 21 Committee, and, you know, to some degree, I'd, I'd say this is.
Housing Trust and other.
And Housing Trust and certainly.
Steve Pinkerton, Acting Chair of the Planning Board. It, we are anticipating, participating in this, obviously, and trying to take a lead in it. And this impacts, this is a great segue into, to the appointment process that we're going to go over here, because I think we have the dream candidate for Associate Member of the Board to head this up. So I'll, I'll propose that momentarily, but I, I think that would go a long way toward. So I'll, I'll propose that momentarily, but I, I think that would go a long way toward, toward making this viable for the Planning Board. Otherwise, if we tie up a full member of the Board, it's, there's just not a lot of time involved, so. So that's where we're at. So we're very much in favor.
There's a nice tight alignment between what you're envisioning with Planning Board's envisioning, I think.
Right, no, and we've been.
See how it all comes together, but.
Our staff has been looking at it. We've been looking at it and, and looking at what's involved and we've got ideas for adding things to what we've got and augmenting what's, what's in there as far as the Planning Board is concerned. But as, as you guys have said, a lot of the work toward the refresh effort has already been done in a, in a sense in that we have a, a housing production plan now in place that can go into that. We have now an energy vision that can go into that. So there are a number of pieces of work that, that feed nicely into the new plan that will update us in, in areas that we didn't even have a plan for, so.
Oh, yeah, like the purchase power policy for the live park. We need to have climate change items which were not.
Which were not in the original, so we're already, we're already in, in line here.
I think even some of the traffic work that we've done, while not necessarily answering all of our traffic questions, does provide good underpinnings for a discussion.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. The traffic committee's work.
Yeah, there's, there's good work. Well, so.
Sorry, when the various stages in this document that says MAPC will do this and will do that, has MAPC signed on to all of this?
So that's part of the grant application. The state funding flows through MAPC, so they ultimately decide. They're currently doing several regional master plans as well as, I think, one or two town plans that they're finishing up. So back to your question of timing, that is one deciding factor in terms of if we're able to secure the grant, when can MAPC start? But we've started that socialization with them and that's why we're saying a twenty, you know, January twenty-twenty start date seems to align with their workload currently. So if, if we do get accepted, we've already kind of at least started seeding the, the, the idea with, with MAPC.
Do you think it's likely, I guess, or maybe Renee would know better, or is it likely that we would get the grant?
So I think right now MAPC is actually helping the town with the economic study, which is also through a grant application process. So chances are it's going to be more challenging for us to get another one, but it doesn't mean we won't get it. So if we try hard, so we would be having the chance, I think.
We've been doing very well with grant applications lately, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Patrice is persuasive.
All right, so you don't, we don't need any vote to proceed at this stage?
I'll work with Kevin and we'll get something.
I think it's more they're, they're looking for an endorsement of this process that's being outlined, which I think sounds great.
Which I think we can formally endorse it.
And doing a refresh instead of a full bottom-up redraft.
I would, I would also thank you for your proactivity and sort of identifying the need to do this and kind of putting forth a proposal and, and a plan to get it done.
And then the Planning Board and everyone stepping up, I think this is great. It's going to be a good, it's going to be interesting exercise. It's going to be a lot of work, but it's going to be good at the end of the day, I think. And it's good that we're getting on it now because it expires in twenty-twenty. So if we get on it now and it takes a year, we won't have any gap. Agreed?
And just one thing, from our perspective, the, the Planning Board's ideal candidate's gain is perhaps the VIC's loss, if that's the way it turns out. So, you know, one concern of ours is getting appointments. New appointments are the VIC, because we've got a couple of people rolling off and some new openings and those sorts of things.
Talk to Patrice's office about the applications we've received and we usually ask the chairs what they think, so.
Yeah, and we've reviewed what's come in already. We've gotten initial feedback, so.
We're not taking you up tonight, though.
Yeah, we do have three appointments tonight, but we will, we will get through the rest of it over the next couple of weeks and appreciate that, that challenge and we'll work to get folks appointed quickly.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep, am I up next?
We've got one more, actually, no, two more and then, and then you. So hopefully the next one will be relatively quick. Discussion impossible vote on the use of the town green space on August twenty-ninth, twenty-nineteen by Basic. So do we have a member of Basic? Yes. Imagine you wait, you waited patiently. Please, please.
Should I just come right here?
Yes, or you're welcome to join us. Join, join us at the table. That works.
This is my first time ever at a selectman's meeting, so thank you.
Excellent. Please introduce yourself and then would love to hear about this application. Yeah, I think it's on.
Oh, this one? Okay. Hi, my name is Annie Gladfelter. I'm the Director of Community Education and Engagement for the Belmont After School Enrichment Collaborative. Currently, our summer program is running out of the Unitarian Church and we were hoping to run a community event for the families that have attended summer camp by hosting an end-of-summer barbecue. We've already spoken to the church. They are more than fine with sharing facilities and resources with us. So we'll be doing, they'll be taking our garbage and composting along with their normal collection. Just that we wanted to be able to use the town green to have families picnic and also to do a, a light barbecue.
Yeah, we've granted these kinds of applications for the use of the town green before, so.
Sounds good to me.
It's stored, great cause. I would move to allow the Belmont After School Enrichment Collaborative to utilize the town green space next to the Unitarian Church on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen for a barbecue.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming forward.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Have fun. Okay, so to set context here, we're, we're at the time of year where we're going to go through the process of committee appointments. If I recall, I think we have about thirty committees now, maybe, yeah, or maybe almost thirty-five that we'll have to work through. We're taking up three of them this evening. We will do the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, and the Community Path Project Committee. All, all committees for which they are active this summer and need, need reappointments quickly.
Starting with the Z's.
So we will start with, we will start with the Z's, the Zoning Board of Appeals in this particular case. Good evening, Nick. Please join us.
Nick Iainusi, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Nick.
Good evening.
So with that, we have our, our big binder here. We've solicited input and volunteers from across the town and actually been pretty pleased with the engagement that we've gotten. So thank you for the proactive outreach and thank you to the community for, for your engagement. In each case, we are typically looking at, in some cases, individuals who will be looking for reappointments. We also have times where we have resignations that we need to, need to fill. In the case of our Zoning Board of Appeals, if I recall, we have one appointment that we'll be making, one.
There's one regular and two.
Two regular and two associates.
Right.
As a matter of.
You got to make sure you're using the one, the one that's on.
As, as a matter of, of record, Blake Courier has left the Board, so Blake was the alternate. Blake is moving to Cambridge. So from what I understand, the permanent appointment would be to Phil Rigerio, who was filling Tino Lachaco's seat. So he would have to be reappointed to a permanent position. So I would, I would ask that, based on my years of experience with Phil, being on the Board, that that seat be refilled, refilled with Phil.
Yeah, there's an error in that first page. It ever says members seeking appointment. It should be Phil Rigerio, not Blake Courier.
Right.
Yeah, and Blake, I don't think, Blake did not reapply. I think he's already moved or is in the process.
Phil has reappointed, though.
Yes.
So that, so just to be clear, so there are two appointments. One is regular and you're recommending that Phil be, that, that's Phil's position and you're recommending that Phil be reappointed.
Reappointed.
Yes, Phil is a, is a regular member of the Board and has been for three years, I believe. Served the Board very well. He's a very good voice on the Board and I would ask that he be reappointed to the Board.
And then the others, we have two associate positions then that are vacant.
One or two?
There are two.
Two. Now, the Zoning Board of Appeals has five, five positions as regular members and three alternates. I was talking to Adam about it.
Started as an alternate on the zoning board.
Yes, as, as did I. And so Casey Williams is one of our alternates. Blake was another alternate, but he left and we had an open seat. So we did get another, we did get a batch of applications, but it would be my suggestion to this, to the Honorable.
Select Board now or Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, Board of Selectmen, although I learned tonight it's not the.
Right.
Select Board until it's signed off by the, yes. That we have some interviews with these candidates, which is what we did last time, so that we could figure out the, you know, the capabilities.
Remember, we were at the high school and we interviewed Casey and somebody else.
Yeah, there was a couple of people that we interviewed.
You would like that to be a joint meeting of the Board with the ZBA?
I believe it was just the, just.
I think it was just the Board, then we did it.
And I was there as well, yes.
You think you were there as well.
We, yeah, we, for some of the larger boards, like the, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, we, we have traditionally interviewed candidates, not that we have to. Sometimes we just interview some. If we all agree, we definitely want this person, there's no point in interviewing that for that slot. But if you have other slots we haven't, you know, we're not sure about. And for most of the Boards, we don't interview people simply because there's just too.
Given the importance of this particular Board, I think it would be useful to actually meet the candidates.
Yes.
I think that's what Nick is suggesting, with the exception that he'd like to get us to reappoint Phil now. And then because Phil's a regular member seeking reappointment, he's served well, his term, his term is up. And then, you know, as far as the associates, you know, to schedule an interview with those folks. I don't know how many of them are here tonight, but.
I, that works, that works for me if that, if that would be your request.
I don't want to make any more work for anyone.
No, no, it's, it's fine.
No, for, for this committees like this, you know, some, it's, they're very important and it's big, far-reaching implications for the town. If we, if you get the wrong appointment, it can be a big, big mess, so.
Yep.
Yeah, just a detail then, given, I guess, a slight confusion about whether it was a regular or an associate appointment, do all of the can, are all of the candidates who might have been contemplating a regular appointment also open to a, the associate appointment? Or do we have to ask?
They just appoint, they just apply for the Board as, there are a lot of Boards that have associates and they just apply to the Board and we can pick who we want to put in. Sometimes it's a one-year term, a three-year term, we.
Okay, well, I guess.
Historically, they happen.
We'd have to ask the candidate if they're willing to be the, the associate member.
In my experience, I think most candidates start out on this Board, the zoning Board at least, as an alternate. That's how I, that's how Adam started, that's how I started, that's how many of us started, just to get a lay of the land.
And for context for the community, the alternates are invited and encouraged to participate in the hearings, to participate in deliberations. They just ask questions, they just don't have a vote, unless a member is not present or has to recuse themselves, in which case they, then one can step in.
And many, many times, we have a, a full member absent. So a number of times, we've had either Casey or when Blake was an alternate or other times when we had alternates vote, so, and write decisions, so.
I had to vote, I had to vote on occasion. Some people, it's a small town. People live next to people's projects all the time.
And the nice thing is, I think it enables you to always have a quorum, so you can continue to do the business at a time when we need to make sure that we're always meeting.
Well, that's why it's important to vote, have Phil voted in tonight because we've had a couple of situations in the last couple of months where we only had four members of the Board and we, we do tell people upfront that you take the chance with four members, you need, but you need all four members to vote. So it's not fair when you.
You can, just to be clear, the zoning Board can meet with four members. It's a quorum.
But you need all four.
You need four votes to win on a zoning Board of Appeals matter.
Right.
So you basically have zero room for error if the fifth isn't there and since there's only one, they only have five people.
Yes.
I think we need to put Phil on tonight. Then you'll have a full Board and one alternate with Casey and then we can fill in later. I mean, unless everybody, unless a lot of people are here tonight, we can interview them now.
I was going to say, before we actually put Phil on, I'd say it'd be great to give, if anyone would like to comment, you know, please feel free to kind of come to the mic and express your.
Or he was here as an applicant to the zoning board.
Anybody who's here is an applicant, you're welcome to.
I was an applicant and I was at your.
You have to go to the microphone.
Yeah, yes, you were. May I move my chair to the side?
Yeah.
Yes, my name is Teresa McNutt and I saw her on the town website about the openings for volunteers. And I attended the Zoning Board of Appeals in July and I did understand how there was people who were not substituting, but as you described, that they were sitting in for people that were absent. I do agree that they have spent their time and they, not that I, I want to give up my position or my application to be on a position, but I respect the fact that they have served at some capacity. So I still am interested on the zoning Board and how you want to proceed from here. I'd be happy to be interviewed.
Great. I think, I think there's a general agreement that that would be a good, a good next step. So we appreciate you coming out this evening and we'll follow up with a plan for interviews in the coming weeks. We. Can I introduce myself, John?
Yeah, sure. John Marshall, Assistant Town Administrator. So Matt Haskell in the Selectmen's Office this past week did reach out to applicants on the three Boards that are in front of you tonight. So we probably do have a big contingency of applicants here, if you want to do interviews.
I'm happy to interview them now if they're here, but if they're not all, if only one's here, then I don't, you know.
I am here as well, obviously. I'm speaking.
My name is Andrew Kelly. I'm also an applicant. Let's make that summarize my thoughts almost exactly, so I'm happy to do what, whatever the Board wishes.
I think, I don't know that we have all attendees though. It would seem if we're going to actually go through the process of, of interviewing, we probably won't.
You have two people.
On the other hand, were, were the applicants notified that they should attend tonight if they wanted to be considered?
Yeah, and, and all but two are here.
So they were specifically notified that if they wanted to be considered, they should attend? Did you get any regrets for sort of reasonable consideration?
Not that, not that were communicated to me. So I, I know that we reached out and I know that we asked people to attend tonight.
Yeah, unfortunately, because you're a Board, you have to deliberate together. We don't necessarily know what decision you're going to make, so we have to go with the, you made the decision that you want to interview.
That era had written.
Yep.
So, I mean, I don't have a problem with going forward with it. I mean, I, I leave it, I guess.
If people were specifically asked to attend, then I think we owe it to them to act tonight.
I mean, I have no problem with it unless, I mean, unless Nick's, unless you're uncomfortable with it or something. I mean, I don't know.
No, I personally know Andrew and he's been Counsel at Rubenstein Redmond since two thousand and seven and real estate attorney. I'd be perfectly comfortable with him on the Board. I don't know Ms. McNutt, but I've read her resume. I think she's an appraiser. And she was a former school teacher.
Yes.
And she was at our Board meeting the last time. And we certainly could use a little bit more diversity on the Board. That mean we don't.
You don't have any women on the Board? You have one, you have Casey, yeah.
Well, for years.
We had none.
We had none since we were on the Board.
I'm blanking on her name, yeah.
Becky Vos.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I'd leave it up to the purview of the Board.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable going forward with it because I happen to, you know, to be honest with you, I kind of like these two candidates from going through the resumes.
Agreed.
I mean, I'm always.
I didn't realize we had actually asked them to attend.
So that's great. I think, I appreciate you doing that, John. That really.
Yeah, let's proceed.
We got a lot of committees to do.
Yeah, let's proceed then. It sounds like there's some, some level consensus.
Like I said, I didn't want to make any more work for anyone.
Yeah.
Well, it works, well, it all works out. I guess, I don't know if we want to pick one and start?
Yeah, let's do it.
Mr. Kelly? I guess I'm always one to be biased towards attorneys who want to be on the Board. Could you tell us like a bit about your background and what you think makes you qualified to be on the zoning Board?
Sure. Well, I've been a Belmont resident for approximately sixteen years. I, I've been, as Nick says, I've been a practicing attorney since nineteen ninety-eight, gulp. And, and, and focusing on, on commercial real estate, leasing transaction matters are basically my, the bulk of my practice, which is maybe less interesting than it sounds, and I don't think it sounds that interesting. But it's, 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 you know, reading complex documents, analyzing them, understanding the, you know, the, the nuances and, and then negotiating with, with other people and trying to come to resolutions on issues that are not necessarily black and white, but shades in between. So, well, I think this would be a good position for me. I, I'm interested in learning about zoning in the town and I think that I basically have the intellectual skill set that would be able to take the issues presented in front of me and look at them, analyze them, listen to people and try to come up with solutions to problems.
And I just want to ask you, do you think that there's often a lot of heat that comes with being on the zoning Board? I think when I got appointed, my neighbor across the street said, oh, great, now half the town's going to hate you at any given time. So I just want to make sure you're, you're okay with, you know, there's going to be pressure and it's, you know.
No, I, I, yes, I mean, it, yes, I was saying to a friend of mine at work today, this is a, you know, you have two. I, I, yes, I mean, yes, I was saying to a friend of mine at work today, this is a, you know, you have two people. Somebody's going to walk out of the room unhappy. So, yeah, I do recognize that. Hopefully, hopefully, many situations, there are paths forward which can, if not give everybody everything that they want, give people something of what they want, and sometimes there's not. Sometimes the answer is yes, and sometimes the answer is no. So, I understand that.
And you can make the hard decision when it needs to be made.
It's got to be made, it's got to be made, yeah.
Do you have any experience as a mediator in your law practice?
No, I do not.
So, I have a, a couple of questions as well. I guess, the first would be, what do you think the biggest challenge facing the ZBA is right now?
You know, it's an, it's an excellent question. I am such a neophyte with regard to town politics, I cannot give, I cannot give a meaningful answer, truthfully. And I don't want to, I don't want to give you a, a, I don't want to blow v eight. So, I, I can't tell you, I can't tell you honestly, honestly. And, and I think part of what, what Nick was saying and, and about getting a lay of the land is, in my case, definitely important to understand, because I, I've never been to a ZBA, I mean, I'll be quite candid, I've never been to a ZBA meeting, so I don't really understand all the issues before it. But I'm sure that there are commercial pressures as, in addition to the standard residential pressures. So, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I think for a real estate attorney, this is going to be fairly straightforward stuff. I mean, I stepped right in, and it was not difficult to pick up when you have the background in the area.
And I think the nice thing about the process of associate or alternate is you have an opportunity to kind of learn the ropes while you.
And the culture of the board and how, how to treat people coming forward. It was really helpful to watch for a little while before diving in. So, yeah, no, I mean, I'm.
Additional questions, and then we can hear from Ms. McNutt? Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Ms. McNutt, would you, could you join us at the microphone?
So, you did cover a lot of interesting information, I agree with that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you the same question, I guess, which is, what makes you qualified to serve on the zoning board of appeals?
I am a residential real estate appraiser, and we need to look at the highest and best use. And one of the highest and best use is, is it legally permissible? And in developing an appraisal, we need to, should I wait a moment?
Yeah, it's why you wait a moment. Hopefully, just don't touch it.
We need to look at the property and the zoning district it is in. And so, it has given me an opportunity to look at a number of zoning bylaws in the communities that I have appraised. And they're very interesting, they are complex. It would take more of a background to be able to comprehend all of it. But in speaking with the towns, they are very understanding, and they do explain, whether it's the building department, the zoning department. And so, I've taken an interest, and I would like to serve on the board.
And you, you understand that sometimes this, serving on this board in particular, like the planning board, brings a lot of controversy with it at times. And you're comfortable with that?
Yes, I will say yes. I will say yes, I like harmony. But I do understand, as I've listened and I've watched on the television, the Selectmen meetings, and I know people who have served on the board, and spoken with them casually. And it's a responsibility, and I think that I can handle that.
Thank you. Roy?
No, I'm good, thank you.
So, I'll ask the same question, because I'm curious to get perspectives. What do you think the biggest challenge in front of the ZBA is right now?
The challenge is, to me, that somebody has a vision of something that they would like to change on their property, and they need to follow what are the guidelines and the bylaws. And it's meeting that connection. And so, that, to me, is what the discussions that you had, was to try and compromise. And I do agree that at times, it's not always going to work out for people. Ideally, in a perfect world, you'd like it to, but that's where the town has its qualities, and that's where I'd like to serve.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question as too, because if we're applying, putting two, it sounds to me like, like the regular member term is a three-year term, because he was in three years and he's up. The other two, we like to have the alternates alternate. Casey has been on for like a year.
A year, about.
So, are we filling a three-year, or is it two years? Maybe it was two years.
No, because I haven't been here two years.
Say at the end.
So, I guess, it doesn't on here, that's why I'm asking is to, who, which, are there, is there a one-year term and a three-year term? Or a one-year term and a two-year term?
So, one of the vacancies will expire in 2021, and the other one will expire in 2022.
Okay, so that was my question. So, we need to appoint one for a three-year term and one for a two-year term.
Correct.
So, we could pick whoever we, it's not reflective of who you are, since someone has to be one and someone has to be the other.
Yep.
And then Casey Williams will be on the other, have one year left, and then they'll just alternate. That way, you're never going to be out with everybody at once, like you have. All right, well, I mean.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm, having gone.
You also have to vote on Phil as well.
Yes. I mean, I've, I've, I've seen, think Phil has served with distinction, and I think, after only being on for one term, I think he deserves another term.
Agreed.
For the regular membership. And as for, to be honest, when I was going through the resumes, Mr. Kelly and Ms. McNutt were the top two. Just, I always go through and rank them, and I hold my reserve judgment until I meet the people, because sometimes my rankings change. But just from the resumes alone, those were my number one and two anyway. So, the fact that they showed up tonight just bolsters their, in my mind, their commitment to the position. They both answered the questions, I thought, really well, and I'm perfectly comfortable. I think just, I don't know, put maybe, you know, which one goes on the two-year term and three-year term? I guess I really don't care. In alphabetical order, I put Mr. Kelly three-year and Ms. McNutt this two-year, but I could be persuaded to go the either way as the alternate positions. That's, I'd be comfortable with that.
That's fine with.
Is I, I guess, as long as.
Comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean.
You haven't had a full complement on that board in a number of years, so this will be.
We've never had a full complement.
There, well, there you go.
There you go.
So, this will.
Since I've been on.
Roy, Roy, any, any commentary?
Probably true. Only the great minds think alike, I guess.
You and I, or the rest?
So, I would make, we got a lot to do, so.
Let's keep moving.
I would make, I'd make, sorry, go ahead.
I would say, actually, I am relieved that we have two alternate positions now, because I have my own cheat sheet here, and Andrew Kelly and Teresa McNutt were on my list also. Meeting, actually, two of the major qualifications for somebody who wants to start out working on a town committee is having the interest, showing up, and having an open mind. And I think that both of these candidates demonstrated that in their comments tonight. So, I would be happy to support both of them for the, for the alternate positions and to vote for Phil's reappointment in the regular position.
I think that is really well said. And with that, I would move to put Phil, to appoint Phil Gerio as a regular member of the zoning board of appeals. Andrew K. Kelly to the three-year alternate position on the zoning board of appeals, and Teresa R. McNutt to the two-year alternate position on the zoning board of appeals.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Nick, for coming out and supporting the process.
Thank you.
I guess letters will be going out. You could talk to the, to John about the process.
Yes, our next meeting is September twelfth, I think.
And you will have to get sworn in with the town clerk's office before that meeting.
You guys can talk about it out in the hall or something, we can keep moving. Thanks, Nick, I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
All right, so, planning board, Mr. Pinkerton, good to have you back with us. Double mic here.
Yeah, and stereo.
So, I need to pull this one up, one second. We've got lots of, lots of tabs in this.
A lot of tabs in that one. I hope I can simplify that for you.
Yeah, hopefully, this one is relatively straightforward. Okay, so just to summarize, if I have it correct, we will have two appointments to be, to make, correct?
Correct, so just for the record, we do have two open seats on the board.
Okay, so we have Mr. Clark's, well, he won't be, he's resigning.
He's resigning, basically, and, and I appreciate his resigning, his chairmanship as well, which allows me to be here to talk about this going forward, so that's good. I'm also grateful for his service.
Oh, absolutely, he's been terrific.
His resignation is effective when? I thought he told me he was thinking of staying to the end of the year.
No, he's, he's, no, he's, it's effective, well, it's, it's effective when his replacement is appointed, basically. His term is up, actually. His term is, yeah, his term. He's just serving till we. His term expired, and he's, he's not asking for a reappointment. He expired July thirty, July first. Right, exactly, rest his peace. I mean.
So, that's one full member, and then we also have an associate member.
Associate member, Boulent Gurrell resigned last spring. His term actually was.
It was a one-year term.
It basically was, essentially. There was some confusion back a few years ago. There were some multiple appointments that were made, and we got out of sync in terms of the appointments. We like to have two of the six appointments to the planning board expiring each year. And so, if you make these two appointments, they would both be for three-year terms, and that.
So, both through 2022.
That's right, and that would bring us all back into sync.
Get you back in sync.
Exactly. I think we pointed Boulent Gurrell for a one-year term, and then he left partway through. We figured we, since he was just the associate member, we'd just wait till it naturally was up. And we, we limped along and did pretty well, so I think we're good. Excellent. So, we're, we're in sync in terms of the, the number of appointments and their terms. I've reviewed the pool of applicants, I think we had nine total. I only got the full applications last Thursday, but I had, names had been floated to me before, and so I did my own research on it. I sent you a little analysis of where I think we can be going at this point, but I want to just read through that a little bit, if you will.
Please do.
So, first of all, looking at the associate member opening, which is what we call it instead of an alternate. One of the challenges, as you heard, segueing from this, facing the board this year, is that we need to participate in the, in the master plan refresh effort. And it, from the very beginning, it occurred to me that the best thing we could do is appoint an associate member to head that up, to, to, because the associate member could take lighter load and devote serious attention to this effort. And that would free up the full members to, to, to attend to their own full loads. And my, in the back of my mind, I always thought it would be a great idea to recruit somebody from the Vision 21 Committee. And I was really thrilled and gratified when Renee Quo agreed to, to apply for appointment in precisely that capacity. She is, as you know, an experienced professional master planner. This is right in her wheelhouse, and she's a member of the Vision 21 Committee and has participated in this all along. I think she's, she's eminently qualified for the, for the, for the task. I think she would be a terrific full member of the board, too. So, this is not just for this. This is anticipating that as openings appear down the road, that she would be in line for, for that appointment to a full. Couple of years ago, I actually supported her to be a full member of the board. Exactly, exactly. And we've been, she's been on the radar for, for some time now. It's just that there have been other members that, that we're, as we're blessed in this town, to have a number of really highly qualified people out there. And, and so, I think it's her turn, and this is a great way to bring her in. If not, we'd be looking at her as the full member, but I think this is a good opportunity for all of us to have her take over that position. So, that's my recommendation on the associate member slot. Regarding the full member vacancy, all four incumbent members of the board are, are pretty well qualified in building, landscape design, and construction, technology, urban and institutional planning. I mean, we have, we have a lot of the bases covered, and we're a congenial board. This is a very cooperative board. We, we, we all, we have, we share our different opinions, and we resolve them, and we come to consensus. And so, we're really looking for members, new members, who can fit that mold. And while we have experience in reviewing zoning law and, and executing legal contracts, and it's just part of our professional worlds, we, we understand a lot of the language involved in, in contracts, the McLean contract, for example, or the legislation coming up that we're gonna, I guess it's been appealed now by Boston, but the Airbnb regulations that we're going to be looking at. I mean, we, we have a facility for that, but we're missing a lawyer on the board. When Barbara Fiacco was on the board, that was a real asset to have her there. She wasn't a zoning expert, but her legal eye on things was, was very helpful. Somebody who can work with George Hall in, in getting things right. I think also, roughly half of our workload has something to do with residential construction, either in, in terms of housing, affordable housing, et cetera, or, or reviewing site plan of Cushing Village and other things, or the, the caseload that we have in special permits in the GR and SRC and B districts. So, so expertise in that area is also interesting. We, again, on the board, have those capabilities, but I'm thinking of Joe De Stefano's role in, in the past board in bringing his expertise as a developer to the table, and that helped many times in negotiating with people, so there are things there. So, of our applicant's pool, actually, three rose to the top. I took Adam's approach to this. I always do this anyway, is I, I do a triage, and then really drill down and focus on the top. In this case, three, because we have one full position. One of those backed out, which left me with two. The two that I think are of interest are in the room right now, Matt Lowry and Laura Burns. They have very different credentials, they come from different backgrounds, but both of them would be a good fit in the, in the board today. I do have a preference. I think that Matt Lowry would be the more qualified of the two. Matt's, well, you may remember him in his long and long-suffering tenure as the Chair of the Belmont Board of Library Trustees for ten years. I think it speaks for himself. He's a congenial leader and a spokesman, he was a great spokesman for the, for the trustees, worked tirelessly to promote the library's interests in spite of, in the face of really difficult political odds. And more recently, I'll, I'll put it that way. I understand what you're talking about. Yes. But more recently, he's come up to speed in our residential zoning law because of developments in, in his neighborhood, and has really been a quick study on this stuff. So, he does have now some technical expertise, in addition to his professional qualifications, which he is here and can, can tell you about. But I would, I would, I would recommend him highly, I think, as, as the full member. For a solid alternate candidate to this, Laura Burns, it just strikes me as being, I had a wonderful conversation with her last night. She's a residential design, build, project planner, developer, et cetera. Her firm is in, in Lincoln, I think. Carlisle, thank you. Close, but no cigar. She, her expertise, I think, would, would service very well in review of special permit and, you know, design site plan review cases, et cetera. It's just, the, the pause here is that we really would like to see that, that legal contribution as well. And I think, and she's never served on any committees in, in town. And Matt, certainly, he's been a town meeting member, he's been, he's well-known around town.
Well, and the lawyer, you're.
And the lawyer, and, et cetera. And he has, I mean, it's similar to Barbara, he's in property law, but he's, he's also got a PhD in electronics, so he's got the technical chops, too, so, in here. So, that's where I would go. On the other hand, I think you would do very well to keep Laura Burns in mind for any, any kind of appointment coming along here. She might serve well. I know that the Vision 21 Committee has, you would have to talk to her about what she might be willing to. But you have to decide. Right, exactly. And, but, I mean, this is obviously your decision on offering you a couple of, it's my, my observation on this.
Appreciate it.
That's where I'm at. As I said, the third, the third top candidate withdrew, and that was it. So, any questions for me? No, I think that was very comprehensive. Want to hear from, see who's here, though. Excellent, okay, thank you.
I suspect we have a couple of, of the applicants here, and I think, given that, again, we requested folks to attend, I think it's not inappropriate for us to do some kind of candidate introductions and interviews, so. Yeah, let's get it going.
They sat through to nine fifteen.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, we'll. We can go perhaps in alphabetical order here. So, is Jonathan Burge here?
Nope.
Jonathan, yeah. Would, would you mind joining us at the microphone?
No. So, I'm Jonathan Burge. I've been a resident for about eight years or so. I work at MIT Lincoln Lab, where I help run the Space Systems Group, and my responsibility is running about a twenty million dollar portfolio of spaceflight projects per year. So, if, by way of any formal qualifications, I have to deal with a government entity that's far more dysfunctional than any town government, and that's the deal. Other than that, I have to admit, I can see the writing on the wall, and I can, I see folks like Laura in the audience, who I have tremendous respect for. And, you know, I would respectfully say, you know, you could, you could do a great job with someone like Laura. I'm clearly fourth in line at best for this job, and so, in the interest of not wasting anyone's time, I'll just be very brief. My interest in the position was that I, like everyone here, I care deeply about this town, and I recognize just what an amazing, special place it is. And I don't see ourselves as owners of this town as much as stewards of something special that we need to make sure we pass on to the next generation better than we found it, or at least is good. And I think there's a lot of challenges to that, and I think the. And I think the planning board is one of the most important parts of the town government in ensuring that we, we pass on a town that's as good as we left, as we found it. So, you know, when you care deeply about something, you want to be part of solving it. But I'm relieved to see that there's a lot of folks here who I have a lot of confidence in, who I think will do that.
You're making this very difficult.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I guess, I guess you've got a very interesting background and how you think that translates to the planning board. And it's sort of sometimes very wonky zoning regulation.
Zoney, it's wonky, but it's probably not rocket science and that's what I do. But in all seriousness, I mean, I think one of the things that you learn dealing with complex projects that are, that are big in scope is that getting out in front of things and not being reactive is absolutely key to, you know, to doing big things, you know, especially in a bureaucracy. And so, you know, I'm sure that's not, that there's some universal applicability of what I do that would apply here.
Yeah. And you know that there's, obviously the planning board has been no stranger to controversy over the last five years. So I guess you're comfortable with that sort of give and take?
And on mine, there are a few things more honorable than being hated for the right reasons, so.
God, you're good. Well. Sorry.
No, I would just be brief in saying that I agree with your assessment of the, how these nominations are likely to play out. But I, you know, admired you a lot when we met during the High School Traffic Working Group meetings. And I hope that you will continue sticking in your oar and serving on a committee at some point.
I absolutely will. Like I said, I care about this town and I look forward to finding a place where I can help.
So I suppose that is my question, is would you be willing to serve on other committees? I see.
IT Advisor.
That's right. I see a High School Traffic Working Group, you know, I see Library Building Committee. Are there other areas that you'd be willing to kind of share your talents with the town or?
Absolutely.
Because we don't appoint the Library Building Committee and the High School Traffic Working Group has got no appointments right now, so.
So maybe there's some other areas.
That's what I was saying, there's like 60 committees for God's sake.
Yeah. Way to feedback, one of the hard things when you apply for these committees is you have no idea what the status is of the applicant pool. And you know, if I had seen Laura in that applicant pool, I would have applied for the library committee.
See, but the beauty of it is also we get to know you and so, and we've interviewed people like this over the years. And when the resumes come up, like for other things, I don't feel the need to interview them because I've already got a sense, but.
Yep.
Understood. I appreciate the chance.
So it's like, it's important that you're here to me. If not for this, for other things, because we have a lot of good committees where you would be really good in addition to this one. The problem is we have a lot of good applicants and we only have really two seats, so.
For the record, my dad was a rocket scientist and worked very seriously.
Oh, real rocket science.
With respect, that was the, that was when engineers were engineers.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mr. Burge. We appreciate it and we will certainly look to find a good way to use your talents.
We let nobody go, just so you know. You show up, you're going to get stuck with something.
All right, so Laura Burns?
Well, I'm Laura Burns.
Would love it if you could provide just a very quick introduction and your qualifications for the role.
So I have spent my whole career working in residential architecture, doing project management, design. I had my own design firm for a while and now run a high-end residential construction firm where I'm the Director of Project Planning, which means that I'm the, I'm in charge of making sure that all the information is put together for all the projects that we build. So that our build teams can execute it accurately and on time and on budget. And I deal with permit processes and make sure that we have all the information that we need to go to any boards that are required to get the multitudes of approvals that end up happening in towns like Belmont and Cambridge and Boston and Brookline, really all over the greater Boston area. So though I have not yet served on a town level, on a governmental level, I have been on the other side of this, of the, I've been on this side of the table many times presenting information for approvals.
Particular question or?
I was gonna, the usual question of how do your qualifications translate really isn't necessary.
Yeah.
Quite self-apparent, I guess. So you haven't, you've been on the, you appear in front of planning boards in other communities as well as Belmont, is that the case?
Yes, yes, I have. Belmont's just once, if I had the pleasure. But we do a lot of work in the City of Boston, which is a very complex network of approvals. And I'm very comfortable working with many different people, working through challenging issues, getting to a resolution that everyone is happy with, because that's inherently what design is about, is getting to a good compromise between what the town allows, what the client wants, what the budget allows, all of that.
And you would, you understand if you were on the planning board, you couldn't appear in front of the planning board anymore.
Of course. I'd have to recuse myself.
Roy?
Roy? No, you seem enormously capable. If, my only real concern is that, actually I independently agreed with Steve that legal skills on the planning board are important. And also the planning board might be the, might be the most important body in town, other than maybe the select board in terms of scope of. But it's, frankly, I think it would be good to have a little bit of experience in some sort of town committee or governance before moving on to the planning board, because it is such a critical committee. But I think you're exactly the kind of person that we're hoping comes forward for these kinds of appointments, because we, I think it's up to us to find a place for you.
And I would be happy to, if it turns out that you do decide that the legal way is the better way at this point, I, like John, would, I'm looking forward to serving for this town, because I do care deeply about not only the look and feel, but the people and, you know, the energy that we are, have the pleasure of living amongst.
Yeah, well, I mean, we all rely on volunteer committees. This town is run by volunteer committees. We're basically volunteer people. And so, you know, if it weren't for the volunteers, we couldn't do anything. It's amazing that we have entire binders full of people who step up when we call. So it's qualified people. It's always difficult to make these appointments, because we always get too many good people, which is a good problem to have, but it's a problem nonetheless.
Yeah.
One quick question, just to get your sense of the biggest challenges, do you think, coming in front of the planning board in the next year?
Well, I think that the balance of finding the right sort of development, meaning encouraging, I mean, there's a housing crunch, as we all know. The appropriate infill, as, you know, estates like the Underwood Estate and up on the Hill, they divide and create more housing, making it fair and equitable. And, you know, the, with the rising markets, we need more affordable housing, making that mixed in with the market rate units. I mean, that's one of the things that, on a couple of projects that I worked with down in Boston, that's one of the things that they are really doing well right now, that they're mixing together the market rate and the low income, so that you don't have this disparate communities within our own one community. I also think that smart, smart commercial development also, bringing in some more income for the town through commercial, appropriate commercial development is also really important. It's got to have a good mix, so that the town remains walkable, happy, beautiful, and really serves, serves our people.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so Chuck is not on the list, so Renee, is it Renee, is it Go? Please, as you introduce yourself.
I'll introduce myself.
I'll get it properly.
So my, I'm sorry. Just make sure this don't slip over. My legal name's Ray Guo, so, but I go by Renee, so please call me Renee, it's easier. So I'm born, raised in China, finished my master program here at Tufts. So right now I live at Fort Oak Street with my husband, my dog, my daughter, three-year-old daughter and one-year-old son. So last name is Guo, if you could pronounce that. But I'm okay with however you pronounce it. So I have so many versions of my last name, so. So over the last six years, I've been practicing as a professional planner, as Steve has already mentioned, at VHB. I worked with many state agencies, local governments and private developers on a wide range of projects. But my primary focus is long-range master plans. So I think it's a perfect niche for me to jump on board with the planning board as an associate member to help with master plan process. So I'm looking forward to serve on the board and just to keep it short, I'm excited.
I have a question. So you, for some reason, your description showed up several times in the page here.
Okay.
And I was very impressed with it, but I was confused by the most recent version, I think from August 2nd or something like that, where it said that you were looking for a one-year position on the planning board. Is that because you want to stay on the planning board for one year or because that's?
I think one year is because when I talked to Steve, he mentioned that the associate member position is going to expire in one year. Okay, so maybe that's, maybe I was confusing that. So I saw there's only one year left on the associate member.
Well, let me put it differently, is your interest in serving a full term?
Yes, yes, long-term, of course. I would like to use my expertise and my passion for community planning for the town, to serve the town and townspeople. I have accumulated really extensive knowledge on land use and policy, housing policy. And also I'm an expert in community engagement, so I think those would come really handy for a planning board member. If we ever need to do any sort of planning, I would be jumped right in front.
Just to clarify, I think where the confusion was is that I was, I'm sorry.
We'd you grab a mic, just for the people listening at home?
Just a point of clarification on the one year. I was, when we were talking, I was thinking that the tenure, not the tenure as of the appointment to, as associate member would be one year. It was that the refresh effort would be a year. And I think that got conflated with what was going on. So what, you know, she would just.
It'd be three-year term.
Be three-year term.
Yeah, sorry, you must got lost in the translation, sorry.
So along those lines, then you have enthusiasm for doing not only the master planning work, part of the master plan, but also serving broadly on the planning board. Thank you.
Well, I was very impressed with Renee a couple of years ago when, at the public hearing on the idea of moving the library over to Waverly Square. And she spoke very eloquently and I, I lobbied two years ago to put her as a full member of the planning board and I got outvoted on that one. But I'm glad to see, I was a little disappointed you weren't back last year, but we, I think we put you on the Vision 21 Committee. And I was at the meeting and it was, it was great time with the master planning process and clearly you know what you're talking about. I could tell from that meeting and I'm glad that you've reapplied, because I wanted you then and I want you now, to be on this committee, so.
That's great.
I know Renee's qualifications, I've been through this before.
Excellent. Well then, thank you very much, in the spirit of moving things forward. Matthew Lowry, it's Lowry. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, thank you, Matt Lowry. If I can echo back, former town meeting member of Precinct 7, former Chair of the Library Trustees, all-around good guy. So wow, that's hard. These people are great. I mean, there is no going wrong and I fully acknowledge that. I assume you'll ask me my qualifications. I've been a resident of Belmont for about 25 years. I've been a practicing lawyer for about 25 years. I'm an intellectual property lawyer, which is very different than a real property lawyer. On the other hand, I am a litigator and I am accustomed to dealing with not just disputes, but a typical project of mine, if you were to do a full patent litigation to the end, it's a few million dollar project. And it's all about the strategy and getting to the end. And that's what I do. I've founded Lowry Lando and Anastasia a number of years ago. About 10 years ago, I went to Foley and Lardner, it's about 1,000 lawyer national law firm. I was the Chair of its National IP Litigation Practice for a while, about five years. I'm the Chief Strategy Partner now. And it used to be I didn't need to take these off. So I've done stuff in the community. I was a member of the Board of the Foundation of Belmont Education for, I don't know, five or 10 years, Chair of the Nominee Committee for several years. Then I went town meeting member for a bunch of years, Chair of the Library Trustees for, I think, around eight years. And then I stepped, I stepped back, because I was getting tired, to be honest. And you might reasonably ask yourself, so, so why is he on now? And the answer is, I think it's really interesting. I mean, I feel a little bit less engaged with Belmont. My wife was a Chair in the, at PTO Pres and that kind of stuff. And we haven't done that. And I feel a little less engaged and I think I'm ready to contribute again. And I think the planning board is super interesting. Mr. Caputo will probably ask, you know, what are the challenges? The Airbnb regulations, that's really interesting.
Yeah.
I'm excited to see what is ultimately recommended and if I'm on the planning board, what I would ultimately recommend, because I don't know. I think it's hard, which is why it's interesting. I think McLean's will be super interesting, probably more for the strategy and to how to position it properly than for the legal parts, although goodness knows the legal parts, I think, will play in. I think special permits are super interesting, because you have to balance progress and building the community with not upsetting the neighbors from what they expected when they bought. I think obviously the Vision 21 stuff is really interesting, defer to Renee on a lot of that, at least initially, for sure. So anyway, I don't want to take any more time than is necessary, but those are my thoughts. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question about, you know, obviously the McLean piece has got a contract that goes along with it. And so it's going to have to be worked on in addition to just any zoning that happens in the coming months. So, I mean, having a lawyer on, I think, would be key to that. I was going to ask you about the library controversy business from a number of years ago.
Yeah, sure.
And you were involved in that and you're, you understand the planning board is, if you've been watching the McLean hearings that were held earlier, is somewhat controversial. You're okay with coming back into that sort of a mix?
Yes, so I prefer a consensus congenial approach, but with 25 years of litigation, I'm comfortable handling controversy. Thank you.
Any concern with having legal expertise without being actually town council? Like you, how do you walk that line between being a lawyer but not being town council?
Yeah, I think that's fantastic question. So when I was on the Library Trustees, I actually opened a pro bono matter and did some very small legal counseling, primarily related to, and I wouldn't do that, I think, on the planning board, but primarily related to identifying when we contact town council. So I'm not a vehicle to save money on town council. It actually might increase the cost of town council, because I will spot things we should talk about. But there was a recent issue before the planning board where I think the planning board was like, mm, and I looked at it and I'm like, I'm not sure I read the bylaw that way. We should talk to George Hall, who I remember from my library days. And he came out with an opinion, which I won't disclose and don't know what it is, but it turns out it may not have been the way it would have gone otherwise. But I didn't save money, I was more like, we need to, you should talk to George.
Thanks. Just a mundane question, given the demands of your day job, do you see any conflict? Because sometimes cases before the planning board can be very time-intensive.
Yes, of course I see conflict. I do not see it being a problem. The, you can ask Elaine Allagood or Mark Garthier or Kathy or Gail McMahon, I do what it takes to get the job done for my, all of my commitments, including those to the public, which are extremely important. Also, I'm trying to lighten my load, which is part of why I'm looking at doing other things.
Okay. Excellent.
Other questions?
No.
Excellent, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
One more thing, Mr. Russey, I need to thank you, because on the campaign trail, you carried something heavy, helped my daughter carry something heavy from my porch into my house. Politics are local.
I remember that and you're welcome.
You never did that for me.
Exactly. All right. So next up, Norma Masorati.
She actually, we got an email, she withdrawn her name from contention.
Okay. Excellent. Ira Morgenstein, or Stern.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, I'm Ira Morgenstein. Quickly, my background is in turning around troubled companies. Some of these are quite reasonably large and quite complex. That entails trying to sort through a lot of different information very quickly and coming up with a plan fairly quickly and then testing that plan and moving forward. I have tremendous amount of experience with negotiations, with dealing with legal issues, legal documents. I also have a finance background, I have a construction background, I worked for Shawmed for a while as a CFO. I've also done a lot of building as either a CFO or a CEO. So a very broad background, really strong business skills, leadership skills, really good consensus drawing skills. So, you know, that's, that's who I am. And my interest is, I've been in Belmont three years. I think it's a pretty special place. I don't think, I don't think it's going to be easy maintaining what we have as we move forward. And so I thought that, you know, some of my problem-solving and other business skills, I could bring to bear with the Community Planning Board. planning board.
Are you comfortable with interpreting, interpreting the zoning biologs? A lot of what the planning board does is that. There's the larger bit of the master planning and the McLean and all that, but there's also sort of the nitty-gritty of individual projects and the zoning approvals that go with those.
No problem with that. I, you know, I've gone from one industry to another as in the nature of my job, and so I have to get into fairly detailed information fairly quickly. And, you know, it's, it's just what my skill sets.
All right. To say I'm blown away by the caliber of the applicants.
I agree.
As a detail, are you, can you read construction documents?
No. I can read them as much as any near new if I can read them. I've done a fair bit of construction, but, you know, that's, that's not my skill set.
Okay. You'll probably know my question, a bit of a broken record, but interested to get your perspective on the biggest challenges ahead for next year for the planning board.
You know, coming, I guess, next to last, you've probably heard a number of things I'm about to say. I think getting a stronger commercial base or focusing more on a commercial space for Belmont, particularly as we move forward and resources are going to be even more stretched, I think that's very important. And I also think a diversity of housing, whether it be old age, lower income, et cetera, is going to be important because otherwise we, we're going to move to a direction that is not consistent with what Belmont is today.
Thank you. Additional questions?
That was a pretty comprehensive opening statement.
That was great.
I don't have.
Well, I've heard a few of the questions for a while now, so.
Do some pattern recognition.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, Bethany Murray.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Bethany Murray, and I'm probably the least qualified person to be on this board, but I'm going to put my name forward anyways, and I'd be happy with, I think, anybody you pick here tonight would be amazing to serve this town. I guess my background is, I'm an IT manager at Harvard, and I'm also professional painter and artist. And I've probably moved over 30 times in my lifetime, and this is the place I want to call home. So I've lived here for about two years, and I want to live here for a lot longer. And I have been following the minutes and whatnot for years, the past few years since I've lived here, and I wanted to get involved into local politics and see what I can do to support a community that has made me feel so welcome. I actually know Ira from walking my dog.
[laughing]
It's a small world, and it's lovely.
Terrific.
I guess, how would you find the IT background to mesh with the planning board mission?
So I, my background is Jill of all trades, so I know how to figure things out, and that's what I've done my entire life. I put myself through school. I originally studied biochemistry. I learned how to do IT work. I've worked in operations, PR, you name it. And sales, I run a small, small IT business. I wasn't the owner, but I managed like over 20 people in there. And I know how to figure things out, and that's, I think, a requirement for doing any sort of work well, to be able to take apart a complex problem that you don't necessarily know the answers for. And sometimes operating from a level of assuming your ignorance can be really valuable because you don't come at it with preconceived ideas of what your solution or opinion should be. Does that answer your question?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
No question, or? No, but I, I've got my eye on this person for.
Well, I was about to say, I applaud your sort of acknowledgement and your candor regarding sort of your experience in this role. Maybe not a perfect fit for the planning board, but there's a number of other committees for which you might be great addition.
I see she's number two as IT advisory.
I was going to say, so are you open to other roles, if not?
Yes, I am.
I should also know we have a lot of openings on the cultural council if you want to explore the artist side.
Yes, I would be interested in both. And again, my, when I got the email from Matt saying that I was a candidate for the planning board, I was surprised, but delighted. And I would be very happy to serve in whatever capacity. And I think my strengths are in more in the technical and in the arts, so.
We think we have openings in both of those areas.
Terrific.
And we're definitely going to find something for you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Todd Posey. Todd does not appear to be here. Okay. We're getting there.
Jeremy, also, when the email Jeremy withdrew his name.
Yes, he did.
Yeah.
Yep. And then Cigar Tawari is the last. Okay, so we may have gotten to the end of our list.
Okay, well, it's quite a robust.
It was a very robust.
Impressive pool of applicants. I, if you want me to start here, I mean, I guess, talking about the great minds think alike, I actually had, in my, I wanted Renee on there, and I thought, because I know that Steve has told us before about having, wanting the alternate position to be the, sort of, the master plan lead, and I was thinking that Renee would be perfect for that. So I was, I was along the same lines of thinking of her for that. And I had Laura Burns and Matt Lowry as my tie for first place, to be honest, when you came up and said those two. So I was thinking the same thing, you really needed a lawyer, but on the other, because you don't have one, but on the other hand, Laura's really strong in the background.
Can we create another seat?
Legally, no, unfortunately.
Not in this one in particular. I don't think we have the legal right to do that.
Two associates.
You don't have that in your statute is the problem. So, but we, but I think, again, we couldn't go wrong with any of them. I would say, you know, just simply because we need the, I think, a lawyer on the board is important, not just because I am one, but because I think it's, I think, especially with the McLean contract coming up, I think that is a crucial piece for this fall in particular. So I guess I would, because of, just because of that alone, I think I would put Matt Lowry up as the, as the full member, and Renee as the alternate member. I would note that a lot of these people have listed more than one committee to be on, and all of you were qualified to be on things. We clearly only have two openings and a lot of great people. I would say for some of you, the close, nearest one to this, where we have actually, I think, a ton of openings, especially if Renee leaves, it would be the Vision 21 Implementation Committee, which is working on this master planning process, which has a lot of meshing, not just with the planning board, but with a lot of other committees in town. And that is particularly for those of you who haven't served on committees before, is a good way to come in and sort of get your feet wet in this planning area. And it's like Renee is stepping up from that to the planning board. That would be a good path. Likewise, for those of you with technical backgrounds, the IT Advisory Committee is doing a lot, sort of, working on whether, making our meetings so people can remotely access our meetings and other committee meetings, or people can participate in committee meetings from remote locations, and how would that all work, and keeping our fire, ourselves from getting hacked and ransomwared and all of that stuff. So the IT Advisory Committee is, you know, advises us on things that we're not expert in. So that sort of thing would be great. And there are others, like, you know, like I said, cultural council. We've got openings and tons of things in almost any area. The Cable TV Advisory Committee, I mean, there are things, if you're interested in technical. I mean, there are a lot of technical things we really need volunteers to step up. But that, but to, to back up, all of you are, you know, excellent, and we're, I want to find a place for everybody. The, but I would say Renee, Ray Rene Guo for the temporary and Matt Lowry for the full, for the reasons I stated, for three-year terms each.
Given the lateness of the hour, I will say that I echo 100% of what you said. It's a great, great group, and I think we're very fortunate to have folks that are willing to spend their time and committing that time to Belmont. So thank you.
Well, I'll be brief. My own cheat sheet, I had Matt as the primary appointment, and I had Laura actually as my alternate, but I hadn't appreciated the situation with the planning board's interaction with the master, with the planning board, with the Vision 21 and the master plan. And I see the sense of that, and I defer to the recommendation so that I would actually also concur, I guess, with both of you that we should select Matt and Renee, but with profound thanks for everybody else and hope that.
We can find homes, yeah.
Oh, we will.
Don't be discouraged.
Yeah, we will. So I would make a motion to appoint Matthew Lowry to the three-year full membership to the planning board, and Ray Rene Guo to the three-year alternate position on the planning board. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations and thank you again to all for your.
We'll be, we'll be talking to you soon. You know, if you, any of these other committees interest you, you can still go in the portal and put down, you're interested in those so we can get you on the list. I've been making notes, though.
Yeah.
I don't want to put you on a committee you don't want to be on, you know, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are making progress as it gets late. So Community Path Project Committee now is the last.
Yep, my entire.
And, okay, so in terms of just summarizing where we are here, so we have six appointments to be made, three are ex officio. So those should be relatively straightforward. That would be Patrice, Jay, and Jeffrey. We should be able to dispense with that pretty quickly.
Sorry, so what was that?
I was just saying, so we have basically three ex officio appointments here?
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's.
Which, do we actually, we have to formally make those appointments, or? No, okay, they're all set.
I don't think so.
And then we have reappointment of, through our three individuals now up for reappointment.
So there's six appointments, three appointments to be made, and there are three, so there are three openings, basically.
Correct. And I guess I'm clarifying here. So Roy was listed seeking reappointment. You are not, correct?
Well, no, actually, I am.
You are? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, not, I don't want to be delegate, but I mean, if you are, then you'd have to accuse yourself from this matter.
Well, it depends how the votes are presented, I guess.
Well, it would only be if you withdrew your name from it, because, I mean, you can't vote on something if you're up for a position.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. You wouldn't want to participate in the deliberation, given the vested interest.
Well, it's, I'm happy to leave the room if my own candidacy is considered, but I think if, if we vote candidates one at a time instead of us, then we could discuss people individually.
Yes, at least from my perspective. It seemed to me, though, your interest in that could cloud your view on any of the other roles.
And the fact you'd serve with these people, maybe you'd want certain people on there and others. I don't know. It's a, I think it's a thorny situation. I've never had this situation come up.
No, well, really, I, the reason for my actually desiring to continue as a member is only because I think I probably, in certain respects, know more about this issue than anybody else. And I just think it would be useful to be serving as a voting member, but that's my reason for doing it.
Because you're still the liaison.
Yeah.
So you'd still be able to go to meetings, just wouldn't have a vote.
Understood, understood, but as a non-voting member.
Right.
So.
So you're suggesting you'd like to stay in consideration?
Yes. And, you know, and I, obviously, it's, when it came to my candidacy, I would recuse myself from the vote.
Well, but I think it's all part of the same things. The interviews are all going to be at the same, you know, we're not going to interview for seat one, seat two, seat three.
There may not be too many interviews tonight, given the.
Well, being that there are only two people in the room, understood. But the.
We're not here to be interviewed. We're just observing.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I mean, I would, I would, I would, I would say that, I guess, if Roy wanted to be a candidate and participate, we probably need a town council opinion or Ethics Commission, because I think that's not, I don't want someone to.
My concern is I don't want anyone to challenge it.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'm here because I conferred with Ellen Cushman this morning, so, but if you want to get something more definitive from.
But I mean, as far as deliberating on the position, I don't know how that's possible. Deliberating on the, filling the seats on the committee where you're a candidate.
Okay, so I guess, given the time of night, I mean, if this, if Roy, if you're feeling strongly you would like to participate in the deliberation and be a candidate, which I'm not sure is appropriate, but if that's your position, we probably should get town council to sort of weigh in on the appropriateness of that. Because I, I don't think we'd want this challenged after the fact.
Well, especially in something where the Community Path has already had a lot of contention over the years. I don't want to have, shoot ourselves in the foot, like, legally on this. I think it's a problem.
Agreed.
All right.
I have a 10 o'clock call with George tomorrow.
Okay.
I've just never seen this happen, so I don't know. Like, we're the appointing authority person, actually.
I have no.
I appreciate that it's an unusual situation. I would also point out, after speaking to Ellen Cushman this morning, that the, there are four ex officio members of this committee. It's Town Administrator, DPW.
Oh, Fire Chief.
Not the Fire Chief, but.
Public Safety.
Community Development, and Jeffrey Wheeler, I believe.
No, it's, it's technically, it's a Public Safety member.
Listen to the charge right here. So it's ex officio Town Administrator, or Designee, ex officio Director of Department of Public Works, Senior Planner and Public Safety Representative.
So Jeffrey.
So Jeffrey.
The reason I bring it up is that, as written, according to this charge, I believe all of these ex officio members are voting members, but they have not actually voted so far.
No, I don't think we're voting.
Well, Ellen thought that you might be, given the way the charge is written.
No, I think I voted.
Well, the members are.
So it says Member Seven plus ex officio. I guess that's.
That's what I took it to mean, seven members, and then there's the ex officio.
Well, I don't know. It's a little bit vague, to Roy's point.
So I think the, I think it would be useful either to clarify that they are, in fact, because typically, the default, the default status of ex officio actually is voting, and if the intent is for them not to be voting, then the charge should be changed.
I would, I would move to change the charge of the Community Path Project Committee to state that the ex officio members do not vote.
Yeah, it's not voting.
I'm supportive of that.
It's fine. I just want to, I just want to make the clarification.
It's a good point. So if you second it, we'll have a vote. Second. All in favor?
So they just put amended, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, then, I think we're going to move on to the last couple items, and we'll get.
You might want to make sure that the CPBC people know to attend, with you did. I'm doing it again.
I'll circle back in with Matt and make sure. Seeing as how you are here, did you want to comment it publicly on any particular item? If so, I ask you to come to the mic.
Since you have to check with legal, when will you be addressing the issue of the new Community Path appointments?
So we'll check with legal tomorrow, and I imagine we'll have to look at the schedule, but we will very likely pick this one up in our next public meeting, which will be on the 26th.
August 26th.
August 26th.
And then, we have to, Patrice, did you say that, so all of you are not, not voting, and it's you and Jay?
Jay, Jeffrey Wheeler of Community Development, and then the Fire Chief sits on for Public Safety.
I thought Wheeler had been substituted by Wheeler.
They switch off.
Again?
Yeah, they kind of, they alternate back and forth. It's somebody from Community Development.
It's Designee.
Yeah, they switch off.
Thank you very much.
It's who is available.
Okay.
And if you get the order, I'm here, I'm worried you're about time.
Getting an earful tonight.
Exactly, exactly. Let's, let's look at our last couple of items here. All right, so we have just Patrice's Town Administrator's report.
Sure. So attached is a draft budget schedule that has been reviewed by the Financial Task Force, assuming that an override question is being placed on the April 7, 2020 election ballot. To determine if an override is necessary, the budget schedule needs to be moved up. I've met with the Chairman of the Warren Committee to alert the committee of this change in the budget schedule. The Superintendent, who serves on the task force, is also aware of the revised budget calendar. So as of September 4th, the 2020 budget will begin.
Good.
Now that Paramount has concluded their work in town, we can announce the amount received, we can announce the amount received by Paramount. I'm happy to report the town received $20,000, which will be used to offset costs on the police station's renovation project.
Thank you.
Please see the letters of support that we received from the Park Ave Mass Works application. The application has been filed, and we will be working closely with the engineer and the neighbors to produce final plans. If we award the grant, we will be notified in November. Finally, after speaking with you individually, I've implemented performance merit reviews for the non-union employees as I did last year. For FY '20, the merit increases are tied to non-union employees' performance. The merit percentage are as follows. Half a percentage merit increase if the employee meets expectations, 1% merit increase if the employee exceeds expectations, and 1.5% increase if the employee is exemplary. Reviews will be conducted hopefully by the end of this month. And finally, happy birthday, Ellen.
Thank you.
You also had included in here a couple of elements related to archiving.
In regards to what?
Yeah, there's some stuff in here about archiving, from Ellen about.
Ellen and Meg.
Asking you to, it's like emails. Is that supposed to be in here?
Um.
That old minute, see how you got it.
Perhaps not. I just wanted to make sure.
No, I don't know. I don't know what this is.
Maybe it just got stuck in.
It may have just been in the, in the copy.
Accident, accident.
Excellent. So with that liaison reports.
The library trustees and the library foundation are going to want to, want to come and have a joint meeting with us on September twenty-third to discuss the library building project.
Okay, is that one of our, are you scheduled meetings, or are we trying, okay.
Is that, what, September?
Twenty-third.
September twenty-third. How long?
What, twenty, whatever.
Oh, September twenty-third.
Yeah.
Yeah, I slotted that in, yeah.
And how long do you think we need for that?
That's a joint meeting, and they're going to talk about the project, they want to make a presentation, and we'll assume a lot of questions. I don't know, twenty minutes?
Oh, okay.
Capo.
That sounds great.
An update.
Just an update on the, on the progress, progress of the project.
Correct.
Excellent. Sounds good. Any other updates?
I want to report something from the Conservation Commission meeting that was last week. So there was a presentation by Bill Lavallo, I guess, acting for the High School Building Committee, and there was a representative from NICH who has some responsibility with the site engineering of the high school. They were before the Conservation Commission, because there turns out to be unexpected implications of work around the high school for what may or may not be permissible, given potential runoff into Clay Pit Pond. It emerged from this that there's actually a pretty substantial document that NICH has put together, that, I didn't read it, but it was described as summarizing all sorts of obligations the town will assume by virtue of doing the work at the high school site. Lots of requirements that I think are more than empty phrases, so to speak. For example, catch basins that are supposed to be cleaned four times a year, which has never been done in town, as far as I know. And other things, which, the upshot of all of this, is that they probably imply significant operating costs in the future, either for schools or for facilities, that I certainly hadn't known about until this meeting took place. So I think it would be useful, and, and nobody at that point, not even Bill, had read through this document from NICH, because it was brand new. I think it would be useful if we had a meeting with Bill Lavallo and NICH, just to see what is potentially on the horizon in terms of additional operating budget obligations the town may be incurring as a result of the high school project, which at least was brand new to me on Wednesday, and I suspect that it would be new to, new to a lot of other people. Also, the, the nature, the scope of the work and the magnitude of the expense right now is unknown.
Is this something we have to enter into, to do the project, or is it voluntary?
Well, that was one of the questions I had, and it seems like there are a surprising, there's a surprising range of regulatory requirements that we have to commit to as part of this project, but they have operating cost implications, and they have not been costed out yet.
Yeah, there, I think it's worth a discussion. There are definitely some operating costs that hadn't been anticipated, for example, for snow removal. There's not going to be any delays on site once the building is completed to store snow, so we're going to have to haul it off. That's going to be an additional cost. So there's things like that, that's kind of floating around out there that has been discussed, but no one's really nailed down.
I don't, I don't know how long the list ultimately is, but it's, I, I think it's a non-trivial amount of money when we're all done.
I agree. But it, it would be helpful to know what those cost out.
So who, so NICH was doing this report on behalf of the High School Building Committee? Or was it, who commissioned their work?
It's, I'm not an authority on this, but it seemed like it was a required filing, so to speak.
It's the first I've heard of it.
Yeah, first, I mean, not that I'm involved in every detail, but.
Every time you mess with wetlands, you have to file with the DEP, but I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not surprised by it.
I mean, the, the document was easily a hundred pages, but that's, the first eighty pages were kind of boilerplate.
Environmental documents tend to be like that.
Yeah. So it sounds like a good idea.
But there's no reason to be blindsided.
Yeah.
By this, we should get on top of it.
I mean, there are other considerations, too, whether or not you kind of believe the push towards the zero net energy and the reduction in, you know, cost of electricity, you know, HVAC costs, et cetera. So it may be interesting to, to try to figure out, do we, what subset do we want to cover in this discussion of changing operating costs?
You make a good point, because this document referred to certain expenses that seem to be primarily environmental in nature. But there's a, there is another issue, which I've been discussing a little bit with Bill since the springtime. The HVAC controls for this building are going to be very complex, complex to the point where it may require a consultant to actually run this building, and that would be an operating cost in the future, not, it's not part of the capital cost.
Yep.
So I think.
It may be cost-effective enough that it sort of covers the cost of that individual.
Well, the sheer, the sheer addition of the square footage of the school is going to require additional operating cost.
Well, we knew that, we knew that.
No, but the, the actual control systems are technically highly complex. It requires somebody who is really a trained technician or even engineer, and there's a concern, not only is that a lot of training, but given staff turnover, if somebody is trained and then leaves after a year, it's a problem, so it may be actually more insensible.
You might have to bid, yeah.
Bid it out to a contractor whose business it is to run these things.
Correct, right.
So, you know, if you go through the entire project, which I certainly haven't done, I don't know in the end how long the list will be of cost items we should be aware of, but I think we should do that review sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to help as we plan, you know, five-year forecast, absolutely.
Okay. Makes some sense.
So, just to nail down logistics, you're going to meet with Bill, do you want me to be in the?
I, I think it would be useful for Bill to start, to come to meet here and make a presentation.
Okay, you want here.
Bring whomever he wants to have an initial discussion, and I'm sure there'll be a follow-up.
They may need some time to prepare all of it and digest it all, so I think.
Maybe October or something.
Yeah, we should give them some advance warning on that, because I suspect it's not a small ask.
Are you going to reach out to him? Or you want me to?
No, I will.
All right, minutes?
Yeah, I think let's do minutes.
I thought they were fine, they were just in the May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen minutes, where we had the joint meeting with the school committee at the BSG Center to talk about the rank. It says throughout, it says PPP, it should say RFP.
Yes, that's great.
It talks about the PPP and the BPP, and it's RFP. So it is to make that global change all throughout May thirtieth, the rest of them looked like they were fine to me.
Well, someone was representing the public-private partnership, though.
Yeah, the difference between the P three and the RFP.
Right. So you, you may be right, there may have been some that, that are inaccurate, but I don't know that PPP is by definition wrong.
All right, well, wherever it needs to be.
Never heard the PPP acronym.
I've never heard PPP used before.
No.
Oh, oh.
RFP, yes.
Public-private partnership.
No, I know, I just, I don't know.
I've never heard anyone call it that before.